Andrew to crank everything up.
On set. I would like to call this meeting to order. Start with the recognition of members, and I recognize that all seven councilors are present, as is Mr. Sutherland, and Ms. Hughes is present and recording the meeting. Also present for city staff is Mr. Dickinson, Ms. Roy, Mr. Clement, Mrs. Cadlec, Mr. Summers, Chief DeRoz, or Mr. DeRoz, Mr. Roth, and Mr. Fox. So I thank you all for being here. If you would all please join me, join the council in the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I wanted to start off with a couple of matters in general. First of all, today is National Women's Equity Day. That is, in 1973, at the behest of U.S. Representative Bella Abzug, Congress designated August 26th as Women's Equity Day. The date was selected to commemorate the 20th certification, the 1920 certification of the 19th Amendment to the Constitution. It was the culmination of a massive peaceful civil rights movement by women that had turned its formal beginnings, that had its formal beginnings in 1848, at the world's first Women's Rights Convention in Seneca Falls, New York. It's important to note that the drive to win the vote was a broad and diverse effort. Secondly, I wanted to recognize Susan Smith for her, on her 45th anniversary, as an esteemed and innovative educator for the city of Saco. She began as an educator in September 1st of 1974, and has been a lifelong learner. She has been on a continuous quest to learn and continue to pursue knowledge and the improvement of her craft. She is set an example of innovation and learning. She implemented the first half-day pre-kindergarten program at the Fairfield School in 1984, and I know that at least one member of the council attended that program. She initiated the first all-day kindergarten at Fairfield School in 1999. The focus of her efforts have been to serve the population of most at risk learners. Her service to her peers has been wide-ranging. She has served on the English Language Arts Committee, the Professional Development Team, the Academic Council, the Calendar and Professional Growth and Evaluation Committee. She has served as chief negotiator for the Saco Education Association. She became a negotiator for the Saco Education Association in 1999. And I also want to add that she has a small chain of women's clothing and gift stores, and she opened one of them here in Saco on Main Street to add to the vitality of our Main Street, and that's Nebos. I think we are honored, or I should say, we are honored, to have such a valuable resource and asset in our community. And then finally, the next up is Mr. Alan Gould, who will address the city council on the status of the current executive search. Mr. Gould represents Municipal Resources Incorporated.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, thank you for the opportunity to present to you tonight. As the mayor indicated, we have undertaken your process to recruit and help you select the city administrator. Toward that end, the ad started running on the 9th. We posted the ad in all the typical venues on the 9th. That'll run typically for 30 days. I know that one of my associates, Mr. Stepcinski, has been in touch with, I think, virtually all of you, there might be one he's trying to chase down at this point. And the input that you've given him has allowed us to create what we call an ideal candidate profile, a community profile, and a challenge statement. That's about a seven-page document, which is now posted, I suspect that Ms. Roy has posted it to your website, but it's also posted to the webpage that MRI has recruited, has put up specifically for this recruitment. And that helps give candidates an opportunity to learn what they can about your community, what the specific challenges might be, and what you are looking for. The input you've provided also allows us to develop some essay questions, which will come into the process a little further down the road. So, and also at this time, we have created an email address that allows for input from anybody in the community, any stakeholders. I'll just repeat that address so that any viewers or anybody can write it down. And that would be sacocityadministratorrecruitment@mrigov.com. And those emails will come directly to the recruitment team. I'll read every one of them, and again, they help us filter out the candidates, help us understand maybe what some of the issues are with the community. So with that, the deadline, like I said, will be about September 9th. At that point, we will have reviewed and screened the resumes. We'll then send out essay questions to the top tier of candidates. We'll allow them 10 to 14 days to complete the essays. We'll then score those essays. We'll do some preliminary background checks. We'll do phone interviews, and then we'll work with the city towards further screening process through interviews with a committee here, or a panel, and then with the mayor and council.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Gould to my right? Seeing none, to my left, Counselor Copeland.
Hi, thank you for being here. I'm just looking at your website now, looks interesting. I'll have to look in more detail. So, now your process, you went through that very quickly, so where does the council, I realize that we all had the phone interviews, and we've given our input that way, but in terms of selecting the candidate, where is our input?
So I'll answer that question, and that is specifically, there will be a second interview. It will be with the council. It will be held in executive session so that anyone who wants their identity kept private until they've had the opportunity of addressing their employer, that they're interested in this job. And that actually may be, we may go into an executive session and leave this building to go to another location in case there's reporters that are waiting around the building.
You said second interview, about the first interview.
The first interview is going to be some of the community leaders.
Who?
Well, Bob Quentin, Rob Biggs, Betty Brunswick, trying to recite these names off the top of my head. The people of that sort.
So of that sort, it sounds like older people that have been around a long time.
Emily Walters is one of them.
Who's Emily Walters?
She is Ward Three, Ward Three School Board member.
Do we have any young people on this committee?
Well, she's pretty young.
Okay, well, I don't.
You're not familiar with her. Counselor Menthorn is familiar with her. I think he would vouch that she's fairly young, don't you?
Yes, she is. I'm just thinking that, you know, we have a tendency in our community to have very small committees for the very important roles. And, you know, again, for this round, I would hope we would have an equal number of people in the 40 and under category as we do in the 40 and over category.
And the same for women.
And the demographics of the group also represent what the community demographic is as well. It, you know, again, it seems time and time again, we have the same old people in the same old places and expect different results. And it's been a concern, it continues to be a concern amongst many of our residents that, you know, don't bother, you know, it's the same old people picking the same old people.
I have specifically requested to be on that committee.
You're, the council is the committee, and you're on that committee?
I understand, but I want to be on.
Both committees.
I want to be on, I want to be involved in the process from start to finish. I made that perfectly clear.
Fine, thank you. Any other comments or questions to my left? Counselor Menthorn.
I would hope that council would be privy to all of the applicant's documents in case we see someone that we feel is a council, we would like to see in the second round, even if the preliminary committee chose differently. So we have the full breadth and depth of all the candidate pool at our disposal.
I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions to my left? Any additional comments or questions to my right? Anything else, Mr. Gould?
No, I think if that satisfies your questions, then I've had everything to say that I need to say.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up is public comment. We're going to have two speakers. They're both Steve Shimon. So Mr. Shimon is first going to address us as the school board liaison, and then he will state his name and address and address us as a private individual.
It's good to be here. I, I think that probably all of you know at this point that the school board voted six to nothing to use First Parish Congregational Church, four rooms there, three classrooms and an office, at a cost of $3,000 per month. And that is for a one-year contract. So one of the things that's going to come up this year is what happens longer term, but I'm very pleased that approximately 125 students, our children, will be accommodated, both there and the REC Center, and two at Fairfield, two classrooms there. So we were able to accommodate all those who wanted the preschool this year, and I was delighted to hear that. I didn't realize that the kindergarten is actually not all that old either, and so we have extended down quite a bit since 1999, I gather, when it became full-time for the kindergarten. But anyway, I'm very pleased that we were unanimous in doing this, and we think we have a good solution to it for this year, and I'm glad that it worked out. The other thing is that this is part of, and you will, if you haven't already learned, you will be learning that there, this, we're not only short of space for, we're not only short for the preschoolers, but it's going to be quite an issue for other grades as well, in other locations. We are a growing community, and we have discussed it among the school board, but you're going to, this is going to be something we need to bring up early in the year so we have time to work on, and we'll be doing that. And the other huge issue is that we hope to hear in September regarding the state willingness to build. Either way, whether they do or they don't, we have a big thing to deal with, right? If they do, we still have big things to discuss, and if they don't, it's even a little bit bigger. So either way, we have something coming up this year that probably can't wait much longer. I mean, it will be probably six years after that when we have something really finalized. So I'm hopeful that, and I think everybody will agree with me, that this year is going to be a very important year in that regard. So, thank you on that.
So if you have anything else, are you going to speak to a different matter?
A different matter entirely.
Would you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, it's Steve Shimon, 15 Bayview Terrace.
Thank you.
The other, the other thing is something that came up that is probably happening to other people too, and is a little tricky to deal with because you're dealing with neighbors. Apparently, a couple of years ago, the council passed an ordinance about rentals, short-term rentals and long-term rentals. And apparently, short-term rentals, like month, weekly rentals, are not legal anywhere in Saco except on waterways, right? Except, that's what I was told with code enforcement. I didn't know that, and my neighbors don't know that, didn't know that, but since I went to code enforcement, I told them all. In the meantime, some of my neighbors have been renting weekly. And so, from a neighborhood standpoint of view, sometimes that's not so good, and that's the reason why you pass that thing to begin with. But I think in fairness to the people who are doing the renting, there should be some way to get out information once a law is passed to let people know about this. Otherwise, this is going to continue to happen, and it's going to, so at this point, my question to you as a council is, what is the best way to get information out to the public that, what the regulation is, so that people don't make a mistake? They can always try to do it anyway, but you really can't blame them if they, if nobody knows about it. So my understanding is that what happens is they notify them not to do it again if, you know, if someone complains about it. But as a neighbor, I don't like doing that because I try to keep good relations with people around me, and I don't want to hurt anybody else. On the other hand, I don't want the rentals that are weekly. So that's my point. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay, first Counselor Gay, and then Counselor Menthorn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Shimon, how many people, how many classrooms will be at the REC Center?
Two.
Two.
Thank you.
Two at the REC Center, two at Fairfield, and three at, three at First Parish. And the, I believe that Fairfield has only half-day people, I believe that's only half-day, and there's a reason why we keep at least two because of the pairing of personnel that we have, we have to have at least two in one location. The ideal thing long-term, of course, would be if we can, put in more in place.
Thank you.
Second.
You're meaning, you're meaning Young.
Counselor Copeland. I'm sorry, Counselor Menthorn.
You're meaning Young, not Fairfield, correct?
Oh, I'm sorry, you are.
I want to make sure, because it's going out on broadcast, that it is Young, not Fairfield.
You're absolutely correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Stand corrected.
Not a problem.
That's it? Okay, thank you. So, we have a consent agenda. Does anyone wish to make a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a second on the consent agenda?
Second.
So I have a motion by Counselor Menthorn, seconded by Counselor Gay, on moving the consent agenda to the floor. Does any counselor wish to pull any item from the consent agenda? Looking to my left.
Well, I did point out that I will be voting no on that.
So would you like to, so you want to pull that?
Yes.
Okay. So we are going to pull the employee handbook, item B, from the consent agenda. Any counselor on my right like to pull anything from the consent agenda?
That's item A, Mayor.
So, say again?
That's item A, not item B.
I'm sorry, it's the personnel, the consent agenda, I have listed the consent agenda.
The non-union personnel policy we list on the agenda is item A.
Bookmarks don't work.
So we're pulling A.
We're pulling the employee handbook from the consent agenda.
Consent agenda A.
The public agenda listed.
So we are pulling the employee handbook from the consent agenda. There is no other item pulled from the consent agenda. I'm calling a vote. If there are no other comments, Counselor Smart.
I'm just asking to hold on.
Hold on a minute.
Handbook is B.
Handbook is B. You want to pull A?
I want to pull B.
You want to pull the handbook, or you want to pull the personnel?
She wants to pull.
The non-union personnel policy that you were concerned about.
Sure, her agenda and mine seem to match. That is, B is the personnel policy, is the employee handbook.
The handbook has the policies in it, no?
No, they're two separate items.
Do you want to pull both?
Personnel policy, the non-union personnel policy is A.
Which of these two do you want to pull?
The handbook is B.
I definitely want to pull the handbook.
Okay, so that, that is.
The handbook wasn't the issue, it was the personnel policy.
The handbook is this item, the personnel policy is this item. You're saying you want to pull the handbook?
No.
Is that true?
She objected to the personnel policy.
The personnel policy, but I also, I also think that that should have legal review as well. I thought one was inside the other, but if they're too separate, I'll vote no on both. Pull them both.
You wish to have both, that's fine. So, we're pulling both items A and B from the consent agenda. Any additional items to be pulled from the consent agenda to my left? Any to my right? Seeing none. This is a motion to accept items C, D, and E listed in the consent agenda. Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Counselor Smart?
Yes.
Counselor Menthorn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Gay?
Yes.
And Counselor Archer. The items C, D, and E passed unanimously. Next up, Counselor Menthorn?
For item A.
Would you please pick one and read the motion, since they're both yours?
Thank you. The Personnel Committee has met several times over the last year to review its policies. In order to meet the requirements of Chapter 34 of the Saco City Code, and to provide a clear list of benefits and expectations of all non-union employees of Saco, the non-union personnel policy has been updated. This document and future updates will be shared with all non-union employees, and new employees that are not part of a union will receive access to the document. New employees in a union will receive access to their respective union contract. I move to approve the non-union personnel policy effective August 26, 2019. Second.
I have a motion by Counselor Menthorn, seconded by Counselor Archer, to accept the non-union personnel policy. Are there any comments to my left? Are there any comments to my right? Seeing none. The motion on the floor is to approve the non-union personnel policy. Counselor Copeland?
No.
Counselor Menthorn?
Yes.
Counselor Smart?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Gay?
Yes.
Counselor Archer?
Yes.
The motion succeeds 6-1. Counselor Menthorn, do you have a motion?
Yes, I do. The Personnel Committee has met several times over the last year to review its policies. In order to provide a clearer picture of expectations and the culture we would like to create for all employees of Saco, an employee handbook has been developed. This document and future updates will be shared with all employees, and new employees will receive access to this document. I move to approve the Saco Employee Handbook effective August 26, 2019. Second.
And I heard a second from Counselor Smart. So the motion has been made to approve the Saco Employee Handbook. The motion was made by Counselor Menthorn and seconded by Counselor Smart. Any comments to my left? Yes, Counselor Copeland?
As we discussed during the workshop, I want to go on record saying that this handbook and the personnel policy should be reviewed. They are legal documents, they should have legal review before implemented.
Thank you very much. Counselor Johnston?
With what Counselor Copeland just said, I would suggest that perhaps she make a motion that includes that, and I'd be willing to second it.
So you wish to make an amendment?
I wish to make an amendment to.
To the, oh, no, that's not an amendment. So you want to table it, or do you want to modify the motion?
I wouldn't table.
I would make a motion to, prior to implementation, that it has legal review.
Okay, so I have a motion from, a motion from, subsidiary motion from Counselor Copeland, that prior to enactment as city policy, that it have a legal review. Do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
So I have a motion by Counselor Copeland, seconded by Counselor Johnston, that prior to implementation, that this matter be reviewed by legal counsel. Are there any comments to my left? Counselor, okay, Counselor Johnston first, and then Counselor Copeland.
Yeah, my question is just, do we have, that's what I'm looking for, the revenues in the account to expend?
Excuse me. So, Mr. Sutherland, we have some money to permit this to be reviewed legally?
It's just a question of whether or not the council wants to spend $2,000 for review.
So the answer is yes, if you wish to spend the $2,000.
Right, and so my point is, with that said, a affirmative vote here would basically be authorizing the administrator to expend those funds.
That's exactly what I understand. Counselor Copeland?
Agreed.
I mean, you had a comment you wanted to make?
Well, I also think that the policy should be reviewed, but if the handbook points to the policy, then that would be included.
Okay, well, this amendment deals only with this motion, and this motion is the handbook and the previous motion passed 6-1.
Understood.
So, any other comments to my right? Counselor Archer?
Yes, this is the city administrator.
Do you want to recall?
We believe that legal review is a use of government resources, or city resources in this case.
Again, I truly believe that what we've developed is a strong case for protecting the needs of our organization, and having a policy is more important than specifically what it says in it.
Any other comments or questions from my right? Any additional from my left? Seeing none. This is a vote on the amendment. Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Menthorn?
Yes.
Counselor Smart?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Gay?
No.
And Counselor Archer?
No.
The motion succeeds 5-2. And this is in fact, in effect, a budget motion, and the budget spending passes by two-thirds majority. On the main motion.
The money's in the account, there's, it's just a decision about resources, that's the issue.
Appreciate it. So on the main motion, to accept the approval of the Saco Employee Handbook effective August 6th as amended. Any comment, any additional comments to my left? Any additional comments to my right? Counselor Archer?
Hi.
Counselor Gay?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Menthorn?
Yes.
Counselor Smart?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
The main motion passes 7-0. So, next up is, is the actual agenda. So, first item up is Counselor Johnston, do you have a motion?
City council endeavors to make a few amendments to the charter as described in MRSA Title 38, Chapter 111, Section 2104. The process for making amendments to the charter requires a public hearing before a vote by council. Additionally, if approved by the council, the item would be voted into referendum by the public in November. This particular change is meant to clarify the wardens and ward clerks will be elected to serve two-year terms. I move to open the public hearing for the document titled Saco City Charter Amendment Number 38.
Number 3, 7.02. Candidates dated August 5, 2019.
Second.
So I have a motion by Councillor Johnston, seconded by Councillor Doyle, to open a public hearing on a charter amendment modifying Article 7, Section 7.02. Any comments to my right? Any comments to my left? So, Councillor, oh, Councillor Minton, you have a comment?
Just to clarify for the public at home that may not have access to the agenda, this language just removes reference in 702 that would make those terms concurrent with council, since council is now, under the charter amendments we just passed, has three different cycles that it goes through. So this removes that language that would implement the concurrency. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments to my left? Again, any comments to my right? Seeing none. Councillor Johnston?
Yes.
Councillor Smart?
Yes.
Councillor Minton?
Yes.
Councillor Copeland?
Yes.
Councillor Doyle?
Yes.
Councillor Gay?
Yes.
Councillor Archer?
Yes.
The motion to open the public hearing passes 7-0. Does any member of the public wish to step forward and speak to this motion? Thank you very much. Councillor Johnston, do you have a motion?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
So I have a motion by Councillor Johnston, seconded by Councillor Smart, to close the public hearing. Any comments to my right? Any comments to my left? Seeing none. Councillor Johnston?
Yes.
Councillor Smart?
Yes.
Councillor Minton?
Yes.
Councillor Copeland?
Yes.
Councillor Doyle?
Yes.
Councillor Gay?
Yes.
And Councillor Archer? The motion to close the public hearing passes 7-0. Do you have a motion, Councillor Johnston?
The City of Saco hereby ordains and approves the final reading of Saco City Charter Amendment Number 3, 7.02. Candidates dated August 5, 2019. In further order that the amendment be placed on the November 5, 2019 ballot, this amendment, if approved by the voters, would have an effective date of January 1, 2020.
Second.
So I have a motion by Councillor Johnston, seconded by Councillor Minton. This acts as the final reading. Are there any comments to my right? Seeing none. To my left? Seeing none. Councillor Johnston?
Yes.
Councillor Smart?
Yes.
Councillor Minton?
Yes.
Councillor Copeland?
Yes.
Councillor Archer?
Yes.
Councillor Gay?
Yes.
And Councillor Doyle?
Yes.
The motion passes 7-0. This matter will be going on to the November 5 ballot. Thank you. Councillor Johnston, do you have a motion?
Thank you. To promote healthy standards of living for adults and protect children from the harmful effects of secondhand smoke, the City of Saco is looking to ban tobacco products in the previously specified public areas. All tobacco products, including smoked tobacco, smokeless tobacco, vapes, and e-cigarettes are to be banned. The ordinance has been written and would fall under Section 199-1 to 199-5 of the City Code. I move to open the public hearing.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion by Councillor Johnston, seconded by Councillor Copeland, to open the public hearing. Are there any comments to my left? Seeing none. Any to my right? Seeing none. Councillor Johnston?
Yes.
And Councillor Smart?
Yes.
Councillor Copeland?
Yes.
Councillor Minton?
Yes.
Councillor Gay?
Yes.
Councillor Doyle?
Yes.
And Councillor Archer?
Yes.
The motion to open the public hearing passes 7-0. Is there any member of the public here that would like to comment on this new ordinance to identify smoke-free zones within the city? Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this ordinance, proposed ordinance, I should say? Seeing none. Councillor Johnston, do you have a motion?
Move to close the public hearing and further move to schedule the final reading of implementation of a tobacco-free zone ordinance for September 3, 2019.
Second.
So I have a motion by Councillor Johnston, seconded by Councillor Copeland, to close the public hearing and move this matter to the September 3 meeting. So, any comments to my left? Any comments to my right? Seeing none. Councillor Doyle?
Yes.
Councillor Copeland?
Yes.
Councillor Gay?
Yes.
Councillor Minton?
Yes.
Councillor Archer?
Yes.
Councillor Smart?
Yes.
Councillor Johnston?
Yes.
The motion to close the public hearing passes 7-0. That brings us to the administrative update at 7:26.
The administrative appeal for July 19, 2009, decision of code enforcement officer regarding 5 Wiley Road, Saco, will be held on Monday, September 16. So there'll be an appeal of this council for the decision of the code enforcement to turn off the power Wiley Road for tutelin. The chapter in the code does not provide any information on how the process of an appeal should be handled, but our past practice in this type of situation, an administrative appeal, is to allow for both parties to see and respond to the information gathered before it is provided to the council. The documentation that was initially submitted on August 1 was responded to today and shared with the school's attorney. They choose to respond to that document, they will do so by the end of the day on Tuesday, September 3, and any further response from the city will be provided by September 6. The full packet of information will be sent to council on September 9 to give you all a week to review. I'm working, trying to establish, working with another attorney to develop the procedure for the meeting, and they will assist the mayor in handling the appeal. Last time we used Sandy Gay, probably used the same office, she's unavailable that day, but probably used Keith Jacques?
Jakes.
Jakes?
He's the Bedford attorney and can also assist us in this process. And I'll forward along the procedural outline after I've reviewed it with him. Last week, a question came up about water testing for perfluorinated alkyl substances. I am going to butcher this one. So the Department of Environmental Protection recently sampled the monitoring wells located on Saco Tannery property. This is off of Flag Pond Road, across Long 95. It is owned by, there is a piece that's owned by the city, but most of it's owned by the state. That Saco Tannery property found, which were found to contain elevated levels of per and polyfluoroalkyl substances, also known as PFAs, PFAS. The DEP is investigating residential wells adjacent to the Saco Tannery waste pit on Flag Pond Road. City staff have been working with representatives from the DEP to learn more about PFAS, the sampling process, and next steps. If elevated levels of PFAS are detected in one of those residential wells, and it is determined that the source is external to the residence, the DEP will provide an appropriate treatment system to residents, per DEP's review and approval. Looking to establish a communications department, it is as crucial for citizens to hear from their government as it is for their government to hear from its citizens. Citizens need to understand how tax dollars are utilized and understand the outcomes of implemented policies. Government has so many tools to communicate to citizens, print, television, and online media, through social media feeds, through email and text notifications. This communications ecosystem seems to change by the day. People are busy and oversaturated with information, which means local governments must make effective communication a priority. Two years ago, the administrative team expanded to include the position of marketing communications specialists. The foresight of the elected body in recognizing the need to better communicate with constituents was visionary and intuitive in establishing this new function within Main Municipal Government. After serving in multiple roles within several departments in Saco, over the last decade, Emily Roy was hired to fill that newly created position. While in this role, Emily has led the organization through a strategic marketing planning process and rebranding, has successfully launched several new social media sites, redesigned and continuously works to optimize our website, and has defined an essential resource for this organization and the community. In Emily's free time, she has been completing coursework towards her master's in business administration, which she anticipates to complete this coming winter. Side note, she has to finish accounting, that's... Over the last two years, Emily has developed this new position in Saco and has worked collaboratively with departments to develop communication strategies for handling various citywide initiatives. Some of those projects include disseminating information about municipal bonds and charter amendments, improving the website for the 2020 budget process, and creating recruiting materials for the police department. Outside the city, Emily has become a resource to our regional partners, offering recommendations and guidance to our other municipalities and organizations. She has built a reputation for being knowledgeable, skilled, innovative, and approachable among community members, neighboring communities, colleagues of all ranks within the organization, and vendors. After presenting at Main Town City Managers Association Conference last fall, she received feedback including "super insightful," "Emily was great," and "this was the best presentation at the conference." Emily was a guest at the Marsh, on the Marshall Communications Podcast, the Believe in Bedford Public Access segment, and WPOR Marketing Saco, to name a few. Emily has consistently demonstrated the value of this position and its impact in the community, as well as the state and our region. Like the Economic Development, Human Resources, and Information Technology Departments, communication is a role that provides timely and individualized support services to all departments. To best support these departments, as well as handle day-to-day responsibilities, including managing Saco TV, the official social media sites, city website, marketing communication plans and strategies, press releases, and citywide messaging, communications must be autonomous from administration and needs a strong leader at a director level. Emily has demonstrated leadership, the ability to collaborate and expand, or and execute new ideas, and facilitate healthy dialogues on our social media channels. After witnessing the growth and ambition Emily has shown over the past two years, I'm thrilled to promote her into this new role as the Director of Communications Department. Please join me in congratulating Emily in recognizing the value of this department, which she has so adequately managed, and look forward to the continued success of this department and the support and growth it affords our city and its constituents.
Thank you. Nope.
Now I just need a glass of water.
Oh, okay, great. You can drink when we're done, because we're getting fairly close. Any questions on the administrator's update to my right? Any to my left? Thank you. We now go into the council discussion and comment. Councillor Minton?
I've got three items. One, we've talked several times over the last year, the Personnel Committee was originally set up to be for non-union staff, and there was talk about expanding Personnel Committee to cover all staff, and some of those areas to have more oversight and give Personnel Committee a better understanding of all the processes within the city. And I know we had talked about it, it's kind of fallen into cracks. Second thing, did we not have a tax abatement update that we were going to do for that ordinance as well? And third item, we had talked at one point about raising the unassigned fund balance from 8.3 to 10, up to some higher numbers, especially as we are potentially having multiple funds that we're going to be doing for school construction, wastewater, updates, or upgrades, and some others. And then having a higher unassigned fund balance is going to give us a better bond rating, and therefore it's going to cost the residents less money on those bonds. So I think that's something we need to revisit and consider having in place prior to November, bumping it up to 9 to 11, or 9 to 12, something like that, from the 8.3 to 10 we're currently at.
So, Mr. Southern, do you want to address any of that, or?
Staff are working on the tax abatement update, and in fact, the ordinance changes are being worked through HR and our attorney. So I hope to have that in September for the workshop. The unassigned fund balance is also on the long list of things to try to get done, but I do hope to achieve that before I'm gone.
Okay. Any other comments to my left? Councillor Johnston?
Just a reminder that school starts next week, so there'll be kids waiting at bus stops and walking, so just drive safe.
Yes, please drive carefully.
And, oh, the other thing was something that I've been trying to address for several years, and probably will have to be taken up with the next administrator, but that's what Mr. Shiman spoke about, which was the short-term rentals, and how Airbnb plays into that, because currently it's not addressed. So, just throwing out there for the next council, it's something that if I happen to be here, I would like to address.
Yes, sir, thank you. Any comments to my, yes, I see, Councillor Gay first, Councillor Archer after.
I just have a question. What day does preschool start? Does that start next week also?
I believe so. I think it will be starting, but...
September 3.
Yeah.
September 3, thank you.
With the regular start of school. Councillor Archer?
Yes, I'm speaking as the council liaison to Saco Main Street. Saco Main Street outreach me in support, they need additional assistance with the planting in the waters. I know a lot of us are aware of it, but I was, as their council liaison, they came to me directly.
Yes, sir.
And they need additional city resources. That could be staff time, it could be the purchase of a vehicle, a gator, or whatever it's called.
Right.
But there is, there does need to be some specific resources dedicated from the city to help support Saco Main Street with their beautification efforts.
Certainly, and you know it is within your purview to make a budget amendment to that effect.
At this point, I would prefer that we use city resources that we already have, rather than the purchase of a gator, which would cost, what, 10 grand on average?
If we have city resources, but you've got to check that out, or specifically by asking the city administrator what we have for resources, so...
This is council discussion, it's not the...
That's right.
...motion on the floor.
Okay, that's true.
What I'm saying is that we need to relook at this and how we allocate some resources to...
Right. And so, any guidance you want to give on what sort of motion you would like to see? I will see that we can do that, and check with the city administrator, and have him check with his department heads for those matters.
Correct. Because if we do not have this solved, I would be putting a motion to purchase the necessary resources, which I do not think we need to purchase. I think that would be not a great way of spending the money when we already have the applicable vehicles and things like that.
Right, thank you. Any other matters to my right? Any to my left? Okay, so Councillor Copeland's first.
I'm just curious, what's going on with the purchase of the teen center building?
Mr. Southern?
I have received no updates.
Yep, we close on the building tomorrow.
That's wonderful, I wish I was informed.